The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings that you have provided for each one of us. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing and bringing responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for your loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs for our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved City of Riverbank. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Call please.
Council Authority Member District 1 Luis Uribe.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 3 Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing no conflict, we'll move on to the proclamations. The first one is Lights On After School. Here, Selly, would you please join me up front with, if you have any gatherings?
Hola. Hola, mi nombre es Axon Homon y estoy en el cuarto grado en la escuela de California Avenue. Y estoy en un programa Riverbank Academy of Multi-Language Education, RAME. Estoy en un programa después de escuela por cinco años. The first lights on took place in October 2000. More than 8,000 lights on after-school rallies are held annually across the U.S. 11.3 million kids are left unsupervised after school daily. After-school programs help to protect kids when no one is able to pick us up. After-school programs work with organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, 4-H After-School, local libraries, police and fire departments, and the YMCA to make lights on possible. Last year STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics was focused during Lights On at a national level. Stanislaus County has recently focused on STEM for after-school programs. We are learning the basics of engineering, exploring fun math games, various arts, and making lots of slime. My appeals were to share more with you about Lights On and Riverbank community and what after-school means for many of our youth and families. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Mungus and I attend the Riverbank Language Academy School and After-School Program. The after-school program is important to me because I get my homework done and I get the help I need. The reason I like after-school is because lots of my friends attend the after-school program and I also like after-school because there's a lot of academic activities to do once you finish your homework and it is a safe place for me when my mom and dad are at work. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Isabella Rodriguez and I am a student of the after-school program at Mesa Verde Elementary School. This year, the Riverbank Unified School District Project Action will be participating in the 20th Annual National Lights On After-School Program Event. Lights On is an event that demonstrates the importance of after-school programs in our communities by providing educational activities, mentoring, and a safe environment. We invite you to join us at this free community event full of fun and engaging activities. The Lights On event will be held on Friday, October 25th, at California Avenue Elementary School from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM. We hope to see you there. If you don't mind, can I please pass these flyers out that I have?
All right. Here, Selly, I'm glad you're here. Come on up, kids. You're part of it. And even some of the other kids, come on up. Bring them all up. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Lights On After School. Whereas the Lights On After School is a national celebration of after-school programs and promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. Whereas after-school programs provide safe, challenging, engaging, and enriching learning experiences to help children and youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. And whereas after-school programs support working families by ensuring children are safe and productive after regular school day ends, and whereas such programs help build stronger communities by involving students, parents, schools, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships amongst youth, families, and adults. And whereas Riverbank Unified School District Project Action After School Carried Together in our neighborhoods is recognized in our schools and community as a fundamental after-school program dedicated to providing extracurricular academic and recreational opportunities to students, enrichment in a safe and nurturing environment so students may become diverse individuals. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that Friday, October 25th, 2019, is Lights On After School within the City of Riverbank. Signed today, October 8th. Thank you very much. I don't know. Any photo up? There we are. Kids, would you turn around? There is the photographer. There we go. All right. Now, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say thank you for having us here today. It's always an honor receiving the City of Proclamation, especially for the Lights On Event, that we care for a lot of the students here at Riverbank Unified School District. We hope to see a lot of our families there. It's an opportunity to showcase what we do in after-school program. It's an event that the students are always very excited to have. It is a fun day for them. So we really thank everybody for their collaboration to make this event possible. Last year, we were not able to have it, but we're excited to have it this year and we hope to see most of our community there. Thank you.
All right. Is Michelle Garcia here? Come on up, would you please? All right. Well, we're doing National Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week and Michelle is our code enforcement. And as you will see, code enforcement is extremely important, trying to keep our community safe and in good repair. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, National Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas the State of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the Riverbank citizens through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and safety. Whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive the recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for the residents and business of local communities. Whereas the role of many code enforcement officers have expanded in recent years with jurisdiction increasingly relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. Whereas code enforcement officers have, often have a high visible role in Riverbank and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers. Whereas the City of Riverbank wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve the quality of life within our community. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaims the second week of October 2019 and annually thereafter be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Riverbank. And be it further resolved that the City Council calls upon Riverbank residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by neighborhood improvement officers who serve as our code enforcement officers. Signed today, October 8th, 2019. And I want to thank you for your job. I mean, you're doing a great job. So let's take off. I'm going to have you speak. Okay, but first let's get a picture. Okay, there you go. So if you will say a couple of words, because we truly appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council and citizens of Riverbank. I just want to say thank you so much for myself and for Mark Ellenberg, my coworker, who's also a code enforcement officer. Sometimes code enforcement can be thought of as a thankless job. However, we do have a lot of support from our city staff and we do have citizens that really appreciate the job that we do. And we are here to help all of our citizens live in nicer neighborhoods, keep your value of your homes up. So anytime there's any issues at all, feel free to call us, even if it's just a question. All right? Thank you so much. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Audit presentation. And we have Ms. Rosa Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here in your city today to announce our very first audit of our Measure L. And just to give you a very quick background on the Measure L, in 2016, the voters of Stanislaus County and the voters in Riverbank area voted to themselves to pass a half-cent sales tax for 25 years for transportation improvements in our area. So with that, I'm going to introduce actually Karen Kinsey, who is going to walk you through the presentation. But I also want to give a thanks to our leader here, Mr. Richard O'Brien, who sits in our Stan cog board, and the alternate Cal Campbell that at times attends. And I know that I've seen Councilmember Martinez at our meetings at times. And Sean Scully for his support that he provides at the management and finance in our committees. We couldn't do this alone, so it's good that we have the support of your community. And also, the Oversight Measure L member is here, who makes sure that we are keeping things in order. But Karen is going to walk you through with that and then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to make this presentation to your council. Measure L is the half-cent sales tax that the taxpayers passed on November 8th of 2016. It does span 25 years, beginning in April of 2017 through March 21st of 2042. Fiscal year 1718 was the first full year that Measure L has been in effect and Stan cog received its first distribution June 23rd of 2017. Through the first few months of the measure, Stan cog and staff developed and implemented the master funding agreements with member agencies in Stanislaus County to ensure that requirements outlined in the ordinance would be met. In February of 2018, the first Measure L checks were distributed and they were only distributed at that time to compliant jurisdictions. But by June of 2018, all agencies were receiving monthly distribution checks. In April of 2018, Stan cog contracted with Hudson, Henderson, and Company to conduct the Measure L audits for each of the member agencies that are receiving the Measure L funds, which are all of the cities, the county, and move. The audit process began in August of 2018 and the auditors worked with each of our member agencies to review their documents, prepare individual audits that were required by the ordinance. Audits were completed in April of 2019. The audits came back and there were no findings or issues that were noted, which was great. It was great for all of you and great for us, so we were happy to hear that news. The audit included a report on the expenditures, maintenance of effort, reporting, and administrative limits. The Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure L is mandated by the ordinance to review the administrative process for compliance and to review the annual audits. In April, Stan cog staff provided a compliance report for 2017-18 to the committee. Each member was provided with a comprehensive report of their respective jurisdictions that included copies of the year's financial reporting, maintenance of effort, and the project lists. Stan cog staff also developed the Measure L website with individual pages for each agency where reports are updated each quarter. All agencies were found to be in compliance and you can view these reports yourself at stanislausmeasurel.com. The Measure L Oversight Committee also directed their chair, Craig Lewis, to issue a favorable report to the Stan cog policy board in June and the board accepted that report. In fiscal year 1718, the City of Riverbank received $983,000 in total Measure L funds and spent $194,000. That left an ending cash balance of $783,000 and this has been used for the initial funding for the 2018 pavement restoration project. Please keep in mind that this report is for the fiscal year 2017-18, ending on June 30th of 2018. Prior to the passing of Measure L, member agencies in Stanislaus County were struggling to find street and road money to put forward their projects for streets and roads. So the state, because the state and federal funding resources were pretty much drying up. So with the Measure L funding coming through, they were able to make priority lists and start working on some of these projects. And so we're happy to say that most of those are well underway at this time. I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity tonight to come forward and bring you this good report. We'd like to commend the City of Riverbank on the good work that they do and we appreciate your staff and their responsiveness when we've asked for things. Sean Scully being one of those. We appreciate what he does for us with our management and finance too. And we'd like to acknowledge and thank Carrie Pope, who is your Riverbank representative on the Measure L Oversight Committee. The committee spends a lot of time carefully reviewing the documents that we provide them and asking a lot of questions and they pay close attention to what we're doing. So we appreciate their time and their support. Stan cog does have a website, as I mentioned before, All Things Measure L. You can go to stanislausmeasurel.com. And thank you again for this evening and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, thank you very much. Item two, public comment, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak during this period for once. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council members, Mayor O'Brien. My name is Vicki Holt and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library and I'd like to tell you about some of the programs that are coming up. Storytime is on Mondays at 10:30 and bilingual storytime is on Tuesdays at 10:30. They both continue until the end of November. The Mayor Book Club is on the second Monday of the month following storytime, which is this coming Monday, and the kids are looking forward to the mayor's visit. This month, they have books ready for you.
Oh, good.
This month's art lab is drawing with charcoal. It's coming up Tuesday, the 15th at 3:30. And we're having a Halloween party on Halloween, which is a Thursday, at the library at 3:30. Children are invited to come in costume if they want. They will make two monsters, Jack-in-the-Box spiders, and there will be a sensory table with spooky slimy spaghetti and we're making slime too. We have a candy jar guessing game for them to guess how many candies are in the jar and whoever guesses closest without going over will win the whole jar. We have two book clubs at the library now. We have, for the grown-ups, we have, we're reading The Thinkler Question by Howard Jacobson and that's going to be on October 22nd at 4:00 PM. That's on a Tuesday. So you can come by and enjoy books with us. We have a new teen health and wellness program led by one of our local teens, Avni Parmar. She will be teaching about mindfulness this month on Friday, the 18th at 3:00 PM before the Teen Book Club. So the Teen Book Club is on Friday at 3:30 on the 18th and they will be discussing a spooky book called There's Someone Inside This House, or Your House, There's Someone Inside Your House, by Stephanie Perkins. Light refreshments are provided by the Friends of the Library. And then we are collecting eyeglasses for Second Chance Week. That's on October 21st to the 27th. They're going to refurbish the glasses. It's through Lions Insight and they'll distribute to local charities. So those are the things that are happening in October for the library. All programs with the library are free to the public and it's because of the Eighth of Ascent's dedicated sales tax that the library services are available. So you're always welcome to come by and visit us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? You can leave. You can leave.
Is anybody listening? Mayor and council, good to be back with you tonight. Russell Fowler from Assemblymember Heath Flores' office. You may remember last time that I briefed you on the three legislative bills we had on the governor's desk. Those are still there. He has till the 16th to sign them, so hopefully we'll get some good news here. When they're signed, I'll let you know. We all have a big party. And the other thing I wanted to mention was the assembly member got $12 million in state funds to Stanislaus County OES for some radio emergency equipment for our fire departments. So some of that should be coming to Stanislaus Consolidated and to the City of Riverbank. So we're very happy about that. And we also got half a million dollars for the, I believe it was the, like Boys and Girls Club in Stanislaus County. So we're very happy about that as well. So not much, not many times you can get money from Sacramento. So when we can get it, we're very happy. So that's my update. And any comments, questions, or concerns for me?
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Anything from the public? Again, thank you very much for being here and give our respects to the assembly member. Any further public comment? Mr. Jones? Okay. Item three, consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of September 10th, 2019, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for consultant services without the planning and design to complete a bike and pedestrian active transportation plan for the City of Riverbank. Item 3D, acceptance of the Riverbank Industrial Complex Dock Level project and authorize a file of notice of completion. Item 3E, award bid for the Claus Road Overlay Project to DSS Company DBA Knife River Construction and authorize execution of future change orders. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the consent items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as read.
I'll say it.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council Authority Member District 1 Uribe.
Yes.
Council Authority Member District 2 Fossey.
Yes.
Council Authority Member District 3 Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item five, public hearing. Item 5-1, appeal hearing to consider a city-issued administrative citation for the discharge of illegal fireworks.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. As councils well aware, this was the City of Riverbank's first year enforcing a newly adopted fireworks ordinance, illegal fireworks ordinance. And as such, a number of citations were issued. There is a process within that code that council adopted for appeals of those citations. And and, uh, in consideration, um, of appeals from the Appeals Board to the council, which is the case that you'll be hearing this evening. Uh, the process, uh, has already been, um, laid out for the mayor by our city clerk and then you'll hear testimony from the appellant as well as the staff that were, uh, present.
Okay. We will now open, uh, hearing proceedings. The appeal request to consider was filed by Lourdes Chavez, Citation Number twenty nineteen dash zero two eight zero for a first defense with a thousand dollar fine issued by the city for violation of Fireworks Code Section ninety-three point three zero Bravo, Illegal Fireworks Discharge. Is the city staff present for this hearing? Is Ms. Lourdes Chavez present for the hearing? Let the record show that both parties are present. We will now begin with the testimony and ask questions afterwards. Will the city staff member for this appeals process please come forward to the podium? Please state your name and title.
Donna Kenny, Planning and Building Manager.
Donna, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Let the record show that she has answered in the affirmative. Did you bring any evidence that you would like the council to review?
No handout, sir.
Okay. Please proceed with your testimony.
So on the, um, afternoon and evening of July fourth, twenty nineteen, staff and I were part of, um, outreach, I guess, or a, a strategic team to go out and help with the, um, enforcement of illegal fireworks. I was in the Public Works Truck with the Public Works Director driving. We were out in the field and as calls would come into the call center, uh, we would get a call and an address and go out to that street, uh, to see what we could see. We were told not to approach the people in the house, but just to verify what we saw and take down the address. And then, um, we received a call for this address. I believe it was at nine thirteen in the evening. Yes, nine thirteen P M. Um, so the Public Works Director and I drove out, uh, to, um, Tennessee where this, uh, address is located. We also had to call out there, um, at a nearby court. So we were in the area and, um, there's a little park, um, by Tennessee. And so we drove around the backside, the widest side of the park and observed, um, people at this Tennessee address, um, walking across the street to the very corner of the narrowest part of the park and lighting off aerial fireworks and running across the street back to the driveway of the house. So we watched that several go off and then we drove slowly down the street and took down the, um, address and got a couple houses down. And as we pulled over to fill out our paperwork, um, a couple of the neighbors came outside and as they made eye contact, um, both the husband and the wife pointed to the house where the fireworks were, um, coming from. And I nodded and smiled to them. And then just to make sure we had the correct address, we did a U-turn and drove back and checked the address again. Um, I mentioned that, that we were out in that area anyway, the couple different courts. And so we happened by this house a couple more times, excuse me. And the activity continued for a little bit after that.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions?
Did you visually see the fireworks, um, be lit from that area? Or was it just from the call and then you just happened to show up there?
Uh, we did see it, yes. We, we sat at the, uh, about three or four houses down the street and watched a couple of them go off before we went down to take down the address.
Okay.
My question is, so you say you saw them go off. Does that mean you saw them go up in the air?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Do you have any witnesses that you would like to call up to the podium to testify?
Only our Public Works Director who happens not to be in the city today.
Okay. You may sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, resident, excuse me, will resident Lourdes Chavez please come up to the podium? Please, please speak into the microphone and state your name.
My name is Lourdes Chavez.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Let the record show that she responded in the affirmative. Did you bring any evidence that you would like the council to review?
Yes, I brought two letters of, um, family members and friends that were there and then, uh, contact information for one of our neighbors that was also a witness.
Could you please give it to the clerk? Please proceed with your testimony.
Okay, um, well, good evening. Thank you for taking time to listen to me today. I apologize for the misunderstanding of our last appeal, um, but thank you again. So, uh, I don't even know where to start. Um, well, we didn't have illegal fireworks. We did purchase fireworks at, across, where Save Mart, the Save Mart Parking Lot. Um, we did have family members over. We were celebrating, you know, it was Independence Day. And, um, they all also brought fireworks, but they were just, uh, phantom boxes. We have never utilized any type of illegal fireworks and I would never allow anyone to do so. I have three kids, all the age, under five. I wouldn't put their lives at risk. Um, and I wouldn't let anyone put their lives at risk. Now, I'm not saying that maybe it's, I mean, like they're lying. I don't know if they're lying. I think there was a misunderstanding. We live really close to another neighbor, so I don't know if that neighbor was the one going across the street, um, throwing off fireworks. There, like she said, there's a park in front of our house. I think anyone could go to that park and throw off fireworks. And, um, I don't, that's all I really, I guess I have to say.
Okay, um, does the council have any questions?
Where your home is located, are there other houses, um, right next door, so both on each side of your home?
Um, yeah, two houses, one on each side. The neighbor, the one that I, I just have his witness, I mean, his contact information, 'cause when we received the letter, I figured, 'cause we just moved to Riverbank. We lived in Modesto. Um, we moved in May, so it's our first time being here during Fourth of July. So I understand why you guys are taking this action because I do think that something needs to be done. It was out of control, the amount of illegal fireworks that were lit off. Um, but the I, I don't know. It was just, it was crazy. But the neighbor, so I went up to the neighbor and he said that, I asked him, maybe the whole street got a citation because I didn't know how they could figure out who it was exactly. And he said he didn't and then, so, but he said that his brother happened to be, he went home the next day. He came up to our house and said that his brother happened to be at the bed of his truck watching the fireworks show because it's, it's, it's a, it's pretty much a fire truck, fireworks show in Riverbank. And he said that he was a witness and he saw that we did not light up a single illegal fireworks. We had fireworks for our kids, which are just the ones that go off not too far up in the air.
Did you yourself go inside at any point when the fireworks were being lit off?
No, no.
So you were outside the entire time?
Hmm, I wouldn't leave my kids out in the front without my supervision.
Did you see any illegal fireworks being lit off?
Yeah, everywhere. Literally, you can just look up in the sky and it's.
In front of your house?
No, I didn't see anything in front of my house.
Did you see some near your house?
Yeah, a lot near my house.
Okay.
Donna testified that she saw, excuse me, people at the end of the park, which I assume is a couple, like a block down the street, um, people going back to your house, going back and lighting the big ones. Um, how do you explain that?
I don't know. I don't know how to explain that. Um, we were lighting them up on the street right in front of our house. Um, no one that I know that I saw went across the street, no one that I knew even had illegal fireworks. So I have, I have nothing. I don't know.
Any further questions?
I have one. So how close to were the fire, the illegal fireworks to you? You said you do saw them going off all around you.
Mm-hmm.
So that means they were pretty close to your, your vicinity, your, your lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very close.
Any further comments, questions? Uh, you may sit down for now.
Thank you.
Um, oh, correction. Let me, uh, go back up, Lourdes, please. But do you have any witnesses?
Um, yeah, well, I provided, um, three letters with their contact information and then, but no one was able to come in today.
Okay, thank you. We read their, their information.
Okay.
Thank you. You may sit down for now. Donna, would you please come back up? When you issued the citation, how certain are you that that house or resident in any of them, uh, were lighting off the fireworks?
One hundred percent.
Okay.
And I would also like to note that, um, I'm a little confused because, uh, she did call me after receiving the notice. And she stated to me, and I wrote it down at the time, that she wasn't home at the time, but knows that they did not have any illegal fireworks at the house.
How many citations did you issue?
Nineteen.
In each one, you were one hundred percent positive that it wa, came from those houses?
The ones that I was a part of, when I say nineteen, part of them were, uh, reported by the police department as well. That was the total number of citations that I mailed out on the eleventh. Of the fireworks that, um, I was able to observe and, you know, please know that when we did see fireworks, we would drive over there and we would actually park on the street and we would wait a few minutes and watch before we drove by and took down the address. So I would say probably of the nine or ten that we actually observed, I would say as a hundred percent sure on probably all but one or two.
And in this case?
In this case, a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Would you repeat what you said about was she home or not home?
When she called to ask about the citation and I kind of quizzed her about her situation, she told me over the phone that she was not home on the fourth, that she had relatives over there and she believes, after asking them, that they did not have illegal fireworks.
Okay, thank you.
Illegal.
Illegal.
So describe her house to the park.
Her house, um, is directly across the street from the house, uh, from the park. The park comes down to an angle. And at that angle is where the majority of the fireworks were going off. And I would say it's probably, well, just across the street, so sixty or so feet, um, into the driveway from where the fireworks were being lit off.
Thank you.
Donna, so did you actually see someone light fireworks?
Yes. I saw them bent over and lighting off the fireworks on that corner. And then as soon as the firework would catch, they would run back across the street.
To the address that's in question?
Correct, to the driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions? You may sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lourdes, do you wanna make any counter rebuttals? Please come on up.
So I did tell her that I wasn't there, um, for the Fourth of July. Um, I did, I did have to go and pick up my mom, but when I looked at the time, I was, 'cause I asked for a copy of the citation. It was at nine thirteen. I was there for the whole fireworks show and I saw, I was there and I saw that no one in my family, no one of our friends, no one that was in our house or with us had illegal fireworks.
Did you see any notices about illegal fireworks?
After?
No, before?
No.
We had?
Oh, yeah, I saw them everywhere.
Yeah, we had posters all over.
Yes.
If she's one hundred percent certain and you're one hundred percent certain it didn't happen, there's a dichotomy here. We have to, uh, sort that out. How do you explain an illegal firework being lit off across the street at the park and the person running back to your house?
I don't know. Um, well, I don't know. Did you see someone running across the street? This is my husband and he was there. I did not see anyone running to our house. There was a lot of people at that park that hung around watching the fireworks show because it's a pretty big fire, fireworks show. Um, but I don't know why someone would run across the street to my house. I didn't see anyone running across the street to my house.
Okay.
We have a neighbor that lives really close. I don't know if maybe she saw the wrong house. I don't know, but no one in our house, not, none of our family, none of our friends lit up any type of illegal fireworks.
Any further questions?
Does your husband mind, uh, testifying?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, I think I'll just swear him, uh, and I believe, is that?
Yeah, I was going to.
Oh, sorry.
I have, I know what I'm supposed to do. Could you, uh, uh, tell us your name?
My name is Rodolfo Cardenas Junior.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Let the record show that he answered in the affirmative. Did you bring any evidence or do you just have a verbal testimony?
Well, Lourdes, she, she's been like going crazy over this 'cause you know, it wasn't us that did that. We have three months that we just moved in and this is how we get welcomed to Riverbank. You know what I'm saying? Do you guys actually do fireworks at the park, like the city?
You're providing testimony.
'Cause, um, like, to understand that, 'cause you know, at John Thurman Park in Modesto, you know, the, um, city or whoever does it, they actually throw fireworks up, you know what I'm saying? But over here, I'm pretty sure it's not the city doing that for the community, throwing fireworks right in front of a whole neighborhood, right in the middle of a park. Are you guys? I don't think so. So you, somebody got their stuff really messed up. We're willing to go wherever we have to go, whatever we have to do to clean our name, 'cause it wasn't us. You know what I'm saying? If you guys got pictures, show us pictures, show us whatever you guys gotta do to get that right. 'Cause this ain't, this ain't justice right here. This ain't right. It's not. Especially when you have three kids and you have to fucking work your ass off to maintain.
Let's, let's relax the language.
I'm sorry, sir. It's just, it really, like, you get frustrated and stressed out 'cause you know, sometimes, I don't know, it's just, it's crazy 'cause you know, we have three kids now, so it's a little different than being single and not being, I don't know, not to take care of your kids. You know what I mean?
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me, I forgot. That's, does anybody from the board have a question for, for you, sir?
No.
Nope, okay, thank you. We will now proceed with the, nope. I gotta read my, put my glasses on.
You're on page seven, Mayor.
I am on page seven. Okay, all testimony of this hearing has now ended. I'll bring it back to the council for it back to the council for consideration. Anybody have questions or comments, um, on this matter for the council, from the council?
You said it right, that there's a dichotomy out there, and I know that he, the mister mentioned, uh, do we have pictures, but likewise, I don't see any pictures showing the other way. We do have somebody under oath that works for the city that did, under oath, say that they did see this, and they were out there for this purpose. And so, since neither side has pictures, I don't think it falls into the realm for, you know, evidence right now. We have to just go solely by what each of you are saying, and we will do the best job for that.
All right, I understand. Testimony is, is closed. The reason why we did this was to prevent, um, catastrophes. Last year, we had a grass fire set off by ille, illegal, uh, firework. Uh, there's other houses that have been bombarded by illegal fireworks. Mr. Lawyer, this is here, uh, this is she said, he said, type of a situation?
Yes, but eyewitness evidence is considered to be sufficient evidence.
All right. Do we have any motion?
I'll make a motion for option number two. Not sure how it's stated, to uphold the citation.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to uphold the citation and a second. Roll call, please.
Procedurally, Mayor, I think that, um, we're supposed to call for any other comment not already, um, stated, like public comment separate of the appellant or, or eyewitness testimony. Is what we have on the, on the form.
On the form?
Yeah.
Do we have any other comment from the public? Mr. Jones?
My name is Edward Jones. I live across the street from O'Briens Market, uh, Mobile Home Park. Uh, I'm eighty-nine years old, and I've seen celebration of many groups of people. Uh, you get a congregation of people into an area, and it's hard to distinguish just who comes or wears or who lives or what. I don't know the defendant, and I don't know the prosecutor, uh, but in my time, I've seen stuff like this happen before, and, uh, nine out of ten chances, the whole neighborhood is there. And how you, you can't pinpoint one spot if you got all the neighborhood there doing the same thing. That's all I got to say.
No other comments? Okay, now I'll bring it back to the council for consideration. We have a motion to uphold and a second.
Who was the second by, I'm sorry?
I was.
Council Authority Member District One Uribe?
Yes.
Council Authority Member District Two Fosse?
Yes.
Council Authority Member District Three Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez?
No.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four-one.
This proceeding is now ended. Item five point, five point two, first reading by title only and reintroduction of a revised proposed ordinance adding a new chapter, one twenty-six sidewalk vending to title eleven, business regulations of the city municipal code.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a, uh, returning item for the, uh, third time, I think, uh, that's going to address, uh, something that council's discussed a number of times, which is sidewalk vending. We've made the changes requested by council and consistency changes to the ordinance so that it is fully compliant now and ready for consideration for approval, and Donna, I will walk you through that.
Thank you, uh, council and mayor. Um, as you mentioned, I've been in front of you a couple of times, and so I'm going to drop off some of the, uh, background, so you don't have to listen to it again. Uh, but, ooh, the clicker, there you go. Uh, we do know that there was a law passed that, um, sidewalk, Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, that allows, um, sidewalk vendors to, uh, ply their wares unless the city has regulations in place that, um, regulates it. So, we, um, have to adopt an ordinance in order to regulate it, and it has to be consistent with SB four, uh, nine forty-six, excuse me. Uh, we can't get banned stationary or roaming vendors on public side, sidewalks, walkways, or parks. But one of the things we're hoping this ordinance will do is put enough regulations in it that will help us to regulate. For example, if you have a six-foot sidewalk and somebody has a four-foot table, you can't obstruct for ADA access. You have to have that four feet of room without your table and without people walking in it. So, some of our sidewalks are going to be too small to have a table or a vendor there. So, um, and there'll be, um, other restrictions, too. For example, the proposed changes that we did to this ordinance, um, has noise restrictions. So, if you have several vendors in one spot, they can't all be running radios or their boom boxes or whatever, trying to attract people over and causing a cacophony. Smoking and vaping restrictions. Um, I'd recently had a meeting with some county health workers. They'd been to, um, a farmer's market to share some health information, and some of the vendors around them were vaping and smoking cigarettes, and they felt very uncomfortable and even left early. And then consistent appeals process. The appeals process that we had in the ordinance was slightly different than our appeals process that you experienced tonight, so we made some changes to make them more consistent. But those are the only three, um, areas that we changed. We still believe that, um, this, uh, supports the, the city's vision to thrive and attract wealth, to create jobs and inter, income growth for our residents. They should still be able to come out with, as we mentioned before, um, a business license, uh, which costs twenty-five dollars to process and eighteen dollars, uh, for quarter, and, um, the permit itself is only a dollar. And we recommend that you introduce this for a first reading, and in a couple of weeks, we'll bring back the second reading if you so desire. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Since this is the third introduction to the first reading, I think I'm very familiar with it.
Okay.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. I'm opening it up for the public.
Uh, my name's Edward Jones. I live Mobile Home Park, across from O'Briens Market. We have these outings. Don't you think we ought to be relaxed? You're going to put a bunch of restrictions. Uh, how are you going to have people coming if they have, if there's a lot of restrictions? First is the tables, okay. Put the tables off the sidewalk. They don't have to be on the sidewalk. Smoking? Huh, there's so many people smoking now. You keep them away from your get-together, and it's going to lessen activity. That's the way I look at it. She's just coming down with too much restrictions. Got to relax so we can enjoy ourselves.
Any other public comment? Saying none, I close public comment. Bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion. I make a motion. We approve item five point two as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second to accept the first reading by title only on the new chapter one twenty-six on sidewalk vending to title eleven and a second.
Council Authority Member District One Uribe?
Yes.
Council Authority Member District Two Fosse?
Yes.
Council Authority Member District Three Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I do actually do have, uh, a number of updates this evening. So, as everybody should be aware by this point, PG&E has notified, really, most of California that they may be in, in an area that is in a shut-off, um, zone as a result of, of winds that are moving northbound, both on the west side and east side of the valley. To be very frank, um, Norma and I have participated in a couple of calls on this, and the information that we've received about the detailed impacts to Riverbank and our surrounding areas has been, um, in my opinion, minimal at best. Uh, we know that Riverbank, uh, will have at least one service location that will be going down potentially. Um, we asked them where that would possibly be, because perhaps it's a home, perhaps it's a water well, don't know. And the answer from PG&E is, we don't know. Um, and there's very little that they do seem to know about specifics of where. Um, so, it's been very frustrating, uh, something that we'll need to probably revisit in the future, but, um, we're kind of on, we're not, uh, pushing out any kind of panic right now, because like I said, it's just one location. There are other cities in San Slaus County that have hundreds of locations, so, um, we're just kind of keeping an eye on it. We will have standby as usual, and if it's a city facility, we'll get a generator running and get it up, so, um. Number two, uh, we didn't get into detail on it on the consent calendar, but the, I want to mention the bike and ped plan that was approved this evening moving forward is a really important step for Riverbank. That, it, it's, um, not directly sort of, uh, stated, but it's a really powerful grant document, and I, we think that having it done not only sort of tells us where we want to go, but it also gives us the ability to, uh, acquire money that's not ours, uh, or at least generated in Riverbank, uh, for, for upgrades. Um, third, as council's aware, I submitted a, a letter on behalf of the city requesting that the St. Slaus Homeless Alliance and Community Systems of Care boards consider funding a, uh, transitional housing project here in Riverbank, um, that would, uh, ideally be a location and upgrade to that location, and then operational monies for, uh, homeless or near homeless individuals that are looking for assistance. Um, so we'll be hopefully reporting back with some good news shortly on that. Um, wine and cheese, um, so, uh, as we've discussed, um, and as will be evident, um, there will be, uh, we're, it'll be increased levels of security at this year's event. It was part of, uh, sort of reviewing, um, you know, wh, what we need to do to make sure that this event is as safe as humanly possible. The chief, public works, parks, um, a lot of folks involved have done, we've gone above and beyond, uh, you know, in my opinion, to make sure that, that, um, it's a very safe event this year. One thing I do want to make clear, we're going to be pushing out, uh, just so people are aware, uh, you, there will be checks at all regulated entry points, and there will be no allowances for any concealed carry weapons or knives in the event. So, folks that are used to doing that and bringing those to, to this event or other events will be turned away until those are put away somewhere else. Um, and, uh, finally, um, there, uh, is a crosswalk beacon project that was brought up by, uh, some residents and, um, also worked with council member Reba on it, uh, down here, uh, right near Pizza Plus, and, um, it's going to be kind of a pilot project. We'll see how it works. It's basically going to be flashing beacons on the cross, mid-block crossing, because it's kind of a dangerous spot with regard to how the cars park and some of the speeds in that area. And so, if it's successful and the, and the community feels like there's value, we can start to recreate it in other areas of town and other areas of the downtown. So, those are my updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Uribe?
Uh, so I have two things I'd like to discuss. Um, so I was excited to see the community come out for a full day of training at the St. Slaus Homeless Alliance Retreat. Uh, that covered different types of funding sources, programs, and we got a chance to hear firsthand from experts in the field to discuss best practices. Um, uh, I did bring the packets of info if anybody's interested in reading, uh, going through this. There's a lot of reading. Um, we will continue our work tomorrow night at the next St. Slaus Homeless Alliance meeting at six-thirty PM at ten-ten-Tenth Street in the, at the basement level. It is open to the public. Uh, and secondly, um, I'll be holding an informational night Monday, October fourteenth, uh, starting at six BM, uh, here in the chambers. Uh, I'll be sharing info on housing opportunities, uh, economic outlook, homelessness efforts, and volunteer opportunities. Uh, this will be just a chance to give, uh, have a discussion with residents about anything, uh, Riverbank related. I play some flyers in the back if anybody is interested in, in, uh, joining me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Fosse?
All I have is I look forward to meeting everybody at the Cheese and Wine. I will be assisting in the, on Saturday at the, uh, museum, and on Sunday at the parking for Jacob Myers Park. So, uh, come and say hi, and see you there.
Thank you. Council member Campbell?
I, uh, got the time to, this week to go down to the park, Jacob Myers, and actually see our dog park. It's really incredible looking, but what was really nice was I saw somebody there that was walking their dog along with his wife, and they just can't wait to get started with it, and they thanked me, uh, me as a council member for doing it, and I said, "Well, I didn't all do it by myself. Everybody helped." But I think it's going to be a big success. My only concern, because I know this happened in Oakdale, is that we may get overloaded because we're so, in so much shade, and it's so nice, that I know a lot of people that go from Modesto that go over to the Oakdale Park. So, we'll have to watch that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
The Riverbank High School is going to have a Dia de los Muertos event, or Day of the Dead. That's on November the first at five PM. It'll be right out here at our, um, Plaza del Rio, and there will be altar displays, cultural dancers, contests, music, and also food. Um, the Downtown Business Coalition, which is a group of businesses that are located here downtown Riverbank, um, we had a sip and stroll last month. It was very successful. We probably had about three hundred participants, and it was just to introduce to everybody what's going on downtown, trying to, uh, get more business, trying to get more people to know what we have to offer in downtown Riverbank. So, I want to thank all of the businesses and also the participants, because like I said, it was, uh, success. Um, let's see. Oh, the water, we have changed it, uh, for October first, and our water regulations changed back. So, Sean, you want to just speak something about that, please? Thank you.
Marisol, can you help me with the specifics? That's your department.
Well, technically, it's public work. So, we've gone back down to the two days per week, um, but I believe that might be starting November first, not October first.
Okay, well, it's coming up.
So, we will confirm and check out all of the information for our residents.
Okay.
It's coming up. Thank you. Thanks.
Well, I had kudos on the bicycle ped, um, active transportation plan, and Kathleen, good job on that, uh, getting the funding and going forth with that. I appreciate what you and all the staff do. Uh, the, uh, clause overlay is also coming on up. That's tremendous, which is, uh, going to add a lot more safety, I believe. Is it going to have, uh, decent bike, uh, lanes in there? Good. Um, next week is the League of California Cities, and there's a lot of business and information that can be out there. Uh, I'd like to have all the partition, participation as possible to the, uh, the business and information portions of them. except for the resolutions. I'll handle that myself while everyone else is gone. And then following week, I'll be at a, this is a great topic, wastewater planning conference for two days. Exciting. So with that, we're gonna move into closed session consisting of item 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire District versus City of Riverbank and DOES 1-20. Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CV 19004402. Item 8.2, Conference Real Property Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property 062-031-005 through 007. Agency negotiator, Sean Scully, City Manager. Property negotiator, Ametis Inc., under negotiation price, term of payment, or both. Item 8.3, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6. Agency representative, Sean Scully, City Manager. Unrepresented employees, Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager, Slant Director of Finance. With that, the public has the right to have discussion on these items for five minutes. Is there anyone wishing to discuss these items? Saying none, we are adjourned to closed session.
It'd be like if you chose to.
But, what did he?
What's up with the mic on?
I just turned it on.
You're trouble.
I have to speak. Regular city council and LRA board meetings now back in session. Report from closed session. Item 9.1. Report from closed session on item 8.1. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2. Report from closed session on item 8.2. Conference with real property negotiations. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.3. Report from closed session on item 8.3. Conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, October 22nd, 6:00 p.m. This meeting is now adjourned.